Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today is Thursday, March 25th, 2021. There are four school committee members present right now. I am certain the fourth, the fifth, Mike Flaherty is, will join us shortly. The meeting is being held remote using Zoom technology, so all votes will be roll call. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WCTV. So the first item on the agenda is public participation. So we'll go ahead and if anyone is in the attendees group and they'd like to participate during public participation, just go ahead and raise your hand and we'll recognize you. Just wait a second. Okay. So there is no one there for public participation, so we'll go ahead and move on to good news. Are there any members who'd like to share good news? Kim, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to announce that Grace Bujoli won the Scholar-Athlete Essay Award. She was named one of the two students to represent Massachusetts in a pool of candidates for the NIAA scholarship Athlete of the Year Award. So congratulations to Grace.
Congratulations, thank you. Anyone else? So I just had a couple of things. I had a conversation, an email conversation this week with the Director of the Onset Bay Center, who I thought was going to come tonight and join us for public participation. She wanted to share some of the programs. They have some really amazing programs going on there over school vacation. Kayaking and shell fishing and nature walks and some, some really, really great stuff and it's all free. So if anyone's interested in that, go onto their website. They've got it all listed. You just have to register online. It's really great what they're running down there. And then the other piece of good news I wanted to announce is just that I've been talking to Dr. Shaverhood. It's been so long since we, the school committee, have been able to visit the schools. Something that I know that we all miss being able to do. So she's working on setting up some times where we might be able to get into the schools, not when the students are there. And of course, observing all of the protocols that are in place in the schools right now. But when, when the times are set, we'll, we'll let everyone know. But I know I'm really excited to be able to get into the schools to visit and I'm sure everyone else is. So thank you, Dr. Shaverhood, for working on that for us. All right, so we will move on to the report from our student representative, Emily. Hi, Emily.
Hi, everyone. So I just wanted to share that soccer, volleyball, football, field hockey, football and track are all having games and meets this month. Of course, in accordance with COVID safety measures. So that's really good to see. In addition to school spirits, we had our spirit week for the end of it. So Monday was sport day, Tuesday was character superhero day, Wednesday was throwback decades day. First, what would happen Friday is everyone remote on Wednesday. But what's really good about this is that students are photos.
Emily, Emily, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
To the classroom, quarter grade.
What are you doing?
Kids who are remote as well as participate. And any student that is able to submit. Yeah, I can hear.
We're having a hard time hearing you, Emily. I don't know if maybe you shut your camera off if we'll be able to hear you better.
Is this better?
It is much harder, yes.
It is.
Can you start over, actually?
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't hear much of anything.
We missed a lot of it, so sorry.
What happened there? All right, so I just, I just wanted to share that soccer, volleyball, football, field hockey, football and track are all having games and meets this month in accordance with COVID safety measures. I mentioned other spirit, school spirit. We have Spirit Week 2021 this week. So Monday was sport day, Tuesday was character slash superhero day, Wednesday was pajama day. And of course, they put pajama day on the day that everyone's remote. Thursday is Throwback Decades Day and tomorrow is Viking Blue Friday. And what's really great about this is that both in-person and remote students are able to participate because students can submit photos to their correspondent Google Classroom for their grade. And when you submit photos, you're automatically entered into a raffle to win a gift card for each day of the week. So I saw a couple of people in person sporting some Throwback Decades Day where I myself did some 90s. So hopefully Friday will be a pool of blue, sorry, a pool of blue. That was a tongue twister in the hallways. So everyone should wear blue on Friday. It's really great to see that we're still doing stuff like this. So thank you.
Thank you, Emily. I'm not sure how I feel about the fact that 90s are throwback, but I'm glad it was fun. All right, so we will move on to the minutes of the meeting from March 11th, 2021. Does anyone have any questions or changes they'd like made to those minutes?
No changes. I just wanted to, Mike is in the attendees area.
Yes, yes, he just came on. Here he is.
Oh, okay.
Mike, can you? There you are.
All right, I just, yeah, I just came on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay. So we're on to the minutes. I didn't know if you had any questions or comments. I know you.
I'm gonna have to abstain. I'm gonna have to abstain from them anyway.
All right, so if there aren't any questions, could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
To move.
Some of them. Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mike?
Abstain.
And myself, yes. So 4-0-1. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Student Advisory Report. So I see Mr. Palladino. Do you have students who might be in the attendees that you want to let in?
Yes, I can see them, but if Maya Brown, Grace Bujoli, Autumn Francis, or Gisella Priestley are there, we'd love to bring them in.
I saw Autumn Francis there a few minutes ago. But right now, no, none of them are there.
Okay, I will. I did tell them 7:15, so.
All right, do you want us to move on and then come back?
I apologize. They were coming from games and I told them it's, it's listed for 7:35. Be there at 7:15, but we're a little ahead of the agenda.
All right, no, that's okay. Like I said, one of them was just there, but we can, we'll go to the next item and then we'll come back.
Thank you.
Okay. So next on the agenda is the Student Attending Report. So I'll turn that over to Dr. Shaverhood.
Okay, thank you. In your packet, you have the Student Attending Report. So what I've done is I've given you a three-year summary. So the local, that's our school population currently. We're at 1,829. When you look across and you can see VOTEC is 238. Last year at this time, it was 249 and the year before it was 250. So if you go along, you can just see how we compare to the last two years. So you have a three-year comparison. I just would point out that I think the homeschool this year at 89 is rather interesting. In the last two years, it was 40 and we did anticipate that this would be higher this year just due to the situation that we're in. What we beginning, what we have beginning, we've started to see is the fact that our students that are being homeschooled now are returning to school. We certainly anticipate that that will continue as we move through the rest of this year and certainly into next year. So we would anticipate that our homeschool numbers would match or mirror the 1920 or 1819. The next is School Choice In. So these are the number of students that are choicing into Wareham. This year, we have 64. Last year, we had 69 and the year before, we had 57. So when you look at the number of students that are coming to Wareham, we certainly are on the uphill swing. And given the year that we have experienced, I think holding at 64 is, is pretty, is a nice place to be. We anticipate that this will rise, especially when we open the new elementary. And finally, I just broke down the homeschool students so you can see at the grade level of where students are have been homeschooled. I think first, second, and third grade, it's not surprising, given the year. I, again, I would anticipate that this changes as we move into next year. If you have questions, I would be happy to answer them. And this was, the date that this was taken was January 1st. And that's what we do every year.
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Do we have this particular slide in our packet? These, these three slides?
No, I created them.
Okay, can we have? They're, they're, they're good. I just, you could just send it to us later.
Yep, no problem.
And now I, I had asked about the School Choice In and Joyce had gotten to me today about where to find that information. And just so the public's aware, our packet has like way more detail, but you can, I did look. It is on, it is on the the district website for this meeting, so you can look at that information if you want to. But can we get, can we get a breakdown of where the, the students are coming in from on the School Choice In?
Yeah, I shouldn't give you a breakdown on where they're coming in from. That's not a problem.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Do we know how the School Choice Out numbers varied over the last few years?
Yes, I do. I can. If you look at ODD District right here, this is School Choice Out. So in 1819, we had 276 students going out. Last year, we had 245 and this year, we have 235.
Mary, sorry, I saw your hand up.
That's okay. I think, I think that Mike covered it. I just wanted to know the grade levels of the children that are coming in for School Choice. I think that it was covered though.
Yeah, that is in the packet, actually. The only thing that's not in the packet that Michael, Mike was asking about was where, what towns they're coming from. But it is broken down by grade level.
Okay.
And Mary, it is a little hard to distinguish. It, it, it shows up right after in-state private parochial. Right after that, right after that, it says Wareham. And then you look off to the right and you can make up all the breakdowns.
All right, thank you.
April, go ahead.
Do you anticipate that with the completion of the new school? Do you have an estimate of how many of those that are out of district currently are school choicing that you are anticipating coming back once the new elementary school is completed? Or has anyone expressed interest ahead of time or asked questions about the process of transferring back in?
Did we lose Kim?
Yeah, it looks like she froze. Well, I mean, I could, I can, I can venture to tell you that I wish we had a crystal ball, right? Like, I wish we knew and we could predict what parents would do. But we just look at historical data with other districts and that same predicament that have built a new school and what's happened as a result of that to gauge some of that information. And I know that we planned for 1,020 students. The school was built on the premise of 1,020 students pre-K to grade four. So, um.
And how many students do we currently have in pre-K through grade four?
I don't, I would have to look, I would have to get the exact, not, you know, and this year it's tough because it's all, I would almost look two years ago to get that, so I'd have to look back at that number. But I know that when we planned, it was for the MSBA did a big study and they, they have, you know, they, they plan it because they don't want to build a school too small. So they, they planned for 1,020 and I'm gonna bet we have that, you know?
Um. April, if you did that math really quick, those numbers are right here on the first page of that report. So this report lists local public schools, the numbers by grade of the.
Thank you, Joyce.
I just can't do that math in my head.
Neither could I.
Um, so is Kim back? There she is.
I'm, I am back.
Okay. So I don't have any questions, but I did just wanna, I just had some observations, like the, you know, the upper Cape enrollment. You get it, the number changed a little bit, but the percentage is the same. So we have, you know, the, the enrollment, the total enrollment for the town changed, not just the enrollment in our school. So that, that percentage stayed the same. And you talked about, Kim, about holding our own with the School Choice coming in, but there were 11 seniors last year. So that means we lost 11. So we gained kids even in this environment. We gain kids in School Choice. So I think that says a lot. And I know Andrea, you'd had addressed in the past that, you know, the way that Wareham was delivering remote education, you know, others took notice of that, so. Yeah, so does anyone else have any other questions about that report? Okay, thank you. There's a lot of information in that report. I really, that's one of my favorite reports. All right, so we will circle back to the advisory report. The kids are having trouble with the link.
I think they're on. I think we have two on now.
Okay, yep, Autumn and Gisella.
Gisella's on too. Great. And so I'll start from the beginning. I just wanna welcome all four of our Student Advisory Council members. Gisella Priestley is our newest member. She's a freshman, so she's getting acclimated to the meetings in the process. Sophomore Autumn Francis, who is on, Junior Maya Brown and Senior Grace Bujoli. And it's been, as, as you've heard and as you know, a unique year. And traditionally, we meet bi-weekly during advisory. But unfortunately, advisory only meets once a week. So our meetings time, our meeting times have been down just a little bit. But I think, as you'll hear, they've done some great things and they have some great ideas as we move forward. And they've always been a great sounding board for us as we continue to make changes to try and improve the educational climate in the high school. Whether it be something as simple as a Wednesday schedule change or looking at class dues, they've been on it and they've been great. So I'm gonna turn it over to, I think Grace is gonna start off. And I'll, I'll turn it over to her and hopefully she can turn her camera on as well so we can see. Oh, there we go, Grace.
Hi, so one of the major changes that we did during the school year with the Student Advisory Council is the change to the Wednesday schedule. So originally, Wednesdays were a full day. We would meet periods one through eight and advisory all on Zoom. And being like on a Zoom call for that long of a day was like draining. So we decided to change the day, modify it to like a half-day schedule. And then we'd have lunch. It would be periods one through four or periods five through eight and it would switch bi-weekly. And we'd have lunch, then advisory. And then from around 2:15 to 2:10, it would be an extra help block to students who needed help in their extra classes because this year has been very challenging for some students. So having the extra time was very useful for students to have to get their work done.
Thanks, Grace. And Maya is, I believe, on as well. Maya's a junior and this is obviously her third year. Maya, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I can talk about how we did the outdoor seating for lunch last year. And we got like a bunch of picnic tables and we put a fence around outside the cafeteria so we could have outdoor eating, so you could be outside in the nice weather and be warm while you eat your lunch. Yeah.
And that has, I can't tell you, that's, that's been so valuable for us this year to have that outside eating area. We never anticipated it would be used in this capacity, but boy, has that been a saver. And it's been a beautiful march. So we've been, majority of kids go outside in that area that Maya just talked about. And the kids, they designed the whole area. They picked out the furniture. They designed the area where the fence was gonna go and we had some donations to pay for it. So thanks for bringing that up, Maya. Next is sophomore Autumn Francis. Autumn?
I would just like to add that to the schedule. I think it's better this way because it's a lot less confusing. We're not like flip-flopping classes and we're keeping it steady, like with the same five, six, seven, eight, one, two, three, four. We're not changing it up. I think it's been a lot less confusing for people. And I've been talking with my friends and they're saying how the schedule's also working better for them, how it's better, like they don't have to fit all classes in on Wednesday. It's just like that kind of stuff. It's been a lot easier.
Thanks, Autumn. Thanks for that. And newest member of the committee is Gisella and you'll be seeing her for the next few years, so we want to welcome her. And Gisella, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add.
No, I do not. I think everyone said everything we've done so far very clearly and concisely.
Awesome, thank you, Gisella. And you know, these kids, I know they'll, they'll answer any questions you may have, but I just want to mention just such great, well-rounded students. Most of them are involved in athletics and clubs. And if you ever have a chance, Dr. Shaverhood, check their grades on Power School. They are on point. What great ambassadors for Wareham High School. So thank you all four of you for being here and I know they're ready for questions. So please, anything you want to know about the high school or their, their experience in Wareham in all of the schools, please feel free.
Dr. Swan?
Yes, Mr. Palladino, is this the group that will be looking at our strategic plan?
I, I, we mentioned the Student Council and, and many of these students are involved in Student Council as well. So yes, they will be, but in a different capacity, if you will.
All right, so just briefly, we're now designing our next five-year strategic plan for the Wareham Public Schools. And I'd asked for student, student feedback. So once the draft, we kind of pulled it together and we have a draft. We're gonna hand it out over to all of you and the school and the Student Council. And hopefully, I am really hopeful that you will add your feedback, right, into this plan so that it really becomes yours, ours, the community's overall. So thank you.
I know that they will be involved and they'll be excited to be involved. These, these four are movers and shakers, trust me.
Awesome. April?
I didn't really have a question. I know that these kids have worked really hard, but I just wanted to say, piggybacking on Kim's good news to just congratulate Grace in person since she is now on the Zoom for the, the essay scholarship. So that's an awesome representation of, of, of your, your hard work that you've put in at Wareham. So congratulations.
And we'll be doing a big press release once the trophy comes in for her. We'll be doing a big press release on that. We're just waiting for the award to actually, to come into the school. But yes, congratulations.
Anyone else? Mike?
Hi, yeah, welcome. Great, great presentation. And I just kind of curious how you guys are feeling about the longer hours now.
Personally, I like the longer days when I'm in person in school. It feels like a normal day in having lunch and everything too. It feels like last year before COVID happened. And hopefully in April, when everything gets back to like full-time, when the cohorts like intermingle, it'll feel like it did last year and I'm excited.
That's great. Anyone else? Okay.
All right, well, thank you guys so much. Oh, Autumn, sorry. No, go ahead. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I, um, I'm online school, so I don't experience like actual school on hours. But I'm sure a lot of kids, it's better to get out of the home because they've been there for a long time. So I'm sure that's better.
I just want to say that, you know, as school committee, a school committee member, we hear a lot about student voice. And I think that what's happened at the high school since you got that feedback about the Wednesdays and how the Wednesdays could be changed to be better, I don't think there's been a more clear picture of student voice than that, than, you know, the, the changes that were made based on the students and, and their what, you know, what they brought forward. So good for you guys for, you know, for advocating for that and working with the principal and, you know, and making that happen. That's what it's all about. Well, thank you guys. Really, it's great having you here. Thanks for coming on. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, so we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Report of the Business Manager.
Good evening. In your, in your packet, you received the monthly budget report for February. I have no concerns at this time. I'm just continuing to monitor. We're actually in good shape. And I'm still working on some projections. In, in the next report, the transfers, you'll see that I've started that process. Does anyone have any questions?
Mike?
Yeah, so I missed the last meeting. I'm sorry about that. And there was, there was a big meeting, obviously. But I was, I was trying to reconcile just some of the information that, you know, I gone over that with that meeting and with the new budget numbers and stuff. And I tried, I tried to go on to the, to the business manager portion of the town webs, of the school website. And, and we usually have like the latest documents there, like the progression of what gets voted. And, and I don't see it there. There's just a bunch of old drafts. Can, can we get that up there?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can send you what I'm talking about, but.
Okay, I think I know what you're talking about. If you want to send it to me, you can. Sure, we can get that up.
Yeah, because it's our meeting's coming up, right? And invariably, I get told by someone in town that, you know, the schools just, you know, vote for what they want and it's, it's, we, we never see it. It's, it's just a number and we have no idea what they're paying for and everyone's hiding this and hiding that. Well, well, when we vote on a budget, there's a, you know, detailed line item budget where it shows every penny. And I like to point them to that and be like, there it is. Let me know if we bought too many pencils, you know, so that, that's what we like to see up there. But I'll probably talk to you tomorrow or Monday.
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, this report, this monthly report is on the, in the packet that's posted, right?
Well, yeah, the, the month.
I know what you're talking about. I, I know like on that site, but I'm just saying that it is, there is information available.
No, but there's, but there's no current information for the FY22 budget that was voted on, on the website that I see. Yeah. Anyway, that was all I wanted to say.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions about this report? Christine, my only question is last year, we had some concerns about legal fees, you know, and then going into this year, we had negotiations. And so is that something that's still in range?
That's an area that I'm really watching closely because as you just said, we're, you know, still in negotiations. So yeah, I've been watching it very closely. So I might think that in the near future, there might be a transfer there, but I'm definitely watching it closely.
Okay. And then all the other lines that I had looked at are all addressed by transfers tonight, so.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we also have the, the list of transfers. Does anyone have any questions about those transfers that are being proposed by Christine?
There's no change to the bottom line of the budget. It's reallocating some salaries. And then there was some requests from directors and/or principals for transfers.
Okay. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, right. So I mean, we, we just, you know, this is where we reconcile and say we over-budgeted here and under-budgeted there and such. So in the first item there. Um, so in the first item there, um, what, what's the difference there? I mean, we're moving ninety thousand dollars from, you know, Deacon's regular ed psychological service salaries to Deacon's regular ed guidance. And it, what's that?
Yeah, if, if you see that there's two different um, function codes for the um, Department of Ed, one's twenty-eight hundred and that's for psychologists. And twenty-seven-ten is for uh, guidance and or adjustment counselors.
Alright, so I guess, I guess, and it, I guess this really wouldn't be a question for you, but it might have been a question from Miss Chandler. I don't know if she's on. But like, like, why, why did we need to do that?
Well, she, I don't know if she would be able to answer that, but um, we're just reallocation of the salaries due to the, the. Uh, trying to clean up some of the functions from the chart of accounts from Desi. That's all that is. That's all what all of this is. It's just reallocation of the salary. So they're in the proper place.
Oh, okay. So why, like, why weren't they in the right place? Like? Okay.
I wasn't here last year, so I, I don't know. I just know that I'm um, you know, continue to project out to the end of twenty-one. And continue to bring you um, transfers as we move along.
We're just, we, so for that one specifically, we're just kind of renaming it.
Correct. We're, yes, we're just reallocating that, that salary piece.
Is, is that ditto for the one that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yes, exactly. Yep. So if you look at it, go ahead, sorry.
Yes, and, and then, and then, um, I don't know, like middle of the page, you've got a couple of from items. Um, go, and then they're going to, they're adding up to about seventy-nine thousand dollars for a Deacon's, for Deacon's bed teachers?
Yes, that's the same exact thing. It's reallocation of the salary.
So, so they, so they just should have originally been, all of that just should have been in Deacon's bed teachers?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So then if you look on the, on the second page, Mike, it's just, there's no change to the bottom line in the LEA budget. We're just, um, they're either a principal or director request, or it's a reallocation of the salaries.
Uh, and so, and so the one for a hundred and thirty-four thousand, um, you know, on the second page, like maybe the third item down?
Yes.
Like, that's the same thing?
Yes. Yes, it is. Yep.
So, so it wasn't like, it wasn't like we over budgeted, you know, regular teachers?
No, 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 no. We're just moving them to the correct, um, like I said, the correct Desi function code for reporting purposes.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
And does anyone else have any questions about those transfers? Alright, then I would ask for a motion to accept the transfers.
Mike Flaherty, so moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, Kevin?
Yes.
April? Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and then on to authorization of student activities.
Kim, did you want to address this or do you want me to?
You go ahead.
So it's um, on the superintendent's newsletter at the bottom. It's um, authorization of principals slash designees for student activities. In compliance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Forty-Seven, as amended by Chapter Sixty-Six of the Acts of nineteen-sixty-six. A blanket bond by the town of Wareham identifies each principal annually. The school committee will authorize any such designees and ensure bond coverage. I recommend the school committee authorize the following principles and designees to control the student activities account. So on the second page of the superintendent's report, Wareham High School would be uh, Scott Palladino and designee Heidi Foley. Wareham Middle School would be Principal Tracy Cote and de- designee Sandy Pont. My Forest, Principal Joan Siemens, de- designee Christine Suco. Deacon's Elementary, Principal Bethany, Bethany Chandler, designee Christine Suco. Past Evening School, Principal Jane Fondulas and designee Joseph Marcus.
Okay. April, go ahead.
I just, I just have a question. It looks like three of the schools have um, the designee is another employee of the school. And Christine, you're in there for two of them. And I'm just curious why that is and why it's not to um, another person that works. At those particular schools.
Uh, I was asked in um, the, I was asked in here, that's why I'm there. And it's new, I'm new.
That was, you know, nor, however that works, I'm just asking because you were on two and everyone else seemed to have a separate thing. So I was just curious.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I, I had the same question because it seemed like um, assistant principals, right? Were the other ones?
No, not for the high school.
Who were the other ones?
One was Assistant Principal Sandy Pont at the middle and Heidi Foley's not. She's at the high school.
And what is she?
Teacher.
Okay. I don't know. I just find it kind of odd. That's all.
Um, does anyone else have any questions? Christine, my question, just, could you just briefly go through the process of how money goes in and out of that student activity account?
Sure. So um, students pay for certain activities. I know, I know the high school has several and the other, the other schools have several as well. So the student might pay a fee to go on a field trip, or they might pay a fee for something else. And then, as, as, as required, the, it goes through the warrant process. And then they request a check and they're able to write a check, but they can't distribute the checks. Until it goes through the warrant process. So that the checkbooks are at the schools. So as the students pay for certain activities, it goes into their particular school of student activities. And then as the um, costs are, or costs of goods. Or when they, or they're going on, on a field trip, which isn't this year, but um, then they request that, they request a check payment. Which they can write, but they can't distribute that until it goes through the warrant process or the payable process.
So there is a system of checks and balances?
Yes, there is. Yes, there is. Yes. We actually have um, you know, a, a whole procedure book on student activities.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And is that, I'm sure I should know the answer to this. Is that um, dictated by law?
Yes.
Okay.
E- e- either Desi or the law, both. It's a combination. So.
Okay. Are these, um, these names that are listed as designees, are they, are there any changes? Well, obviously, Christine, you weren't on there before.
Yeah, I'm the change. I'm not sure about the other ones.
The high school's a change.
The high school's a change. Thank you, Andrea.
But the middle school is not.
Okay. Okay, if there aren't any other questions, I will take a motion to approve that list.
So moved, Kevin.
Second, Mike.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, Kevin?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Five zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we'll move on to the report of the superintendent. Who was frozen at the moment?
She's always so intent, you know, when she's frozen, like she, you think she's listening or something?
Probably is listening, but she's frustrated because she's frozen.
Alright, we'll give her a minute to fix that.
Usually it's April.
Yeah.
Good job, April.
We figured out the key to me not freezing is having my video off. Until Wednesday, rise and fixes it.
The opposite of being seen and not heard.
Alright, so first I.
Cap, she's gonna boot you out of that office.
There she is.
I think you're muted.
Okay. I changed locations. We'll see if that works. Alright, let me try this. To begin with, I would ask that you vote um. Vote the budget, the bill warrants and the payroll. You hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Yep. Okay, is there a motion to approve the, the bills and the payroll warrants?
Moved.
Okay.
One second.
Uh, roll call vote, Kevin?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So five zero zero.
Alright, I'm gonna try to share my screen and see if I can, there we go. Okay, the first I would ask that the transportation fees for FY twenty-two. Be waived for next year. We waived them for this year. And um, just while we anticipate that we will be. Going from day one, there's still a little bit of uncertainty. And so at this point, for us to collect the fees and then having to deal with returning fees, et cetera. We would just ask for one more year of waiving the fees. So this would take a committee vote because it was voted to institute the fees. So to waive them one more year, I would just ask the committee for their vote to approve that.
Okay, are there any questions about that?
Do you need a motion right now or is there more to be said?
Well, I can, if you don't mind combining the athletic fees, we can make it a one motion.
Okay.
Okay, so I would also ask that we waive athletic fees for one more year. Um, we did that this year. I've listed the fees and the sports. So I would ask that we do one more year of waiving the athletic fees for our students in Wareham. So we would be waiving both collections of fees for next year.
Uh, I moved to waive the athletic fees and the transportation fees with pleasure.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask for a second and then I'll come back to you, April, for your question, okay?
Second.
Okay. Go ahead, did you have a question?
Yeah, my only question is that with the athletic fees, I know that a lot of that helps to pay for, you know, equipment and field usage. And for um, like EMS that's required at a lot of the games. So where will tho- those funds come from if we're waiving the fees? I'm all for waiving the fees. I know it'll be a huge help to families, especially those that may have. There had their jobs, um, you know, kind of affected by, by COVID. But I'm just curious as to, I just don't want to see the kids end up suffering in the long run. Because we won't be able to have, you know, either like the, the EMS on board or updated equipment, should it be needed? I'm just curious where those monies would come from, if they're usually from the fees.
Uh, yes, well, for the next two years, I think that the budget in, at, for the school district. Will not have any downside due to the number of grants coming in. We do not anticipate that there will be any reduction of services for our students by waiving these fees.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? That was actually, I was gonna ask the same question. I'm happily, happy to waive the fees. I just wanted to make sure there'd be no consequences um, for the kids. Okay, so we have a mo- uh, motion and a second. So we'll do a roll call vote, Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Kevin?
Enthusiastic, yes.
And myself, yes. So five zero zero. And thank you, Dr. Shaverhood, for bringing that forward. And I'm sure many, many families will appreciate this.
Uh, you're welcome. Okay, next on the agenda, I would ask the committee to please consider. Um, increasing unit A and B's salary. Unit B took a voluntary freeze as we began the school year. Unit A, when we negotiated with them, with the one-year negotiation, uh, they were going to receive a one percent. On their sixteenth pay. Due to the fact that we've been able to save money. Um, the number of grants that we've received, we're in a much different situation than we were when we first started this school year. And so what I, what we have uh, discussed with, with the WEA. Would be to go to September one and institute a one percent increase. With step and lane changes from the beginning of the year. The teachers have worked incredibly hard. Um, and this is just, just a small token. That we could do to show our appreciation. I sent the MOA out to you earlier this evening. It has been ratified by the WEA and so I'm now bringing it to the committee for their vote.
Okay, and just to be clear, we did, we did discuss this last time at our executive session. Is that true?
Yes.
Same, okay, same concept that we discussed. Does anyone have any questions? Mike, go ahead.
Um, Dr. Shaverhood, can you, so, so you had just sent us the verbiage of this, uh, like about a half an hour before this meeting. Can you post that on the screen?
Oh, I, I don't, I don't know, Mr. Flaherty. Let me try.
Okay. And, and just, and just where I'm coming from is, I mean, I, 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 I support the notion of this. I just want to know exactly what I'm voting for. And I, and I wasn't at, I wasn't at that executive session. Uh, I was, I was out that, that school committee meeting. So, I, I, I mean, I, I think I'll support it in spirit, but I might, I just might abstain just because I, I don't really know exactly what I'm voting on. But, but I, I supported in spirit for sure. That, that we worked in good faith with those, with those guys. And, and if we can do it, we can do it.
Yeah, let me. So Mike, while she's trying to do that, with the MOA, the current MOA states. Is that that increase would happen on the sixteenth ha- pay halfway through the year.
Yeah, right, but, but the thing that, the thing that she sent a little while ago, there it is. It, it references, it doesn't really tell me anything. It just has referenced the appendix and I don't, I don't have that and I got this a half an hour before the meeting.
Right, so what we did is, we had an agreement um, that we negotiated last year that took us into this year. That's why everything remains in place. All that we're changing is the language for the salary. And so that's why it says, um, you know, all terms remain the same. We are merely adjusting or attempting to adjust, adjust the pay from step, September one. Through August thirty-first.
And this was obviously vetted through Greg?
Yes, it was.
Alright.
Um, and as, as one of the school, the two school committee members that were there at the um, the original negotiations. I really feel like this fulfills the spirit of that negotiation because at the time, we weren't sure where, what direction the budget was going in. It was very uncertain. It was at the beginning of COVID. And so now that we, we know and we're able to go back, you know, a- and be able to do this. Um, and I don't know, Mary was the other school committee member there. So maybe, Mary, do you want to say anything about that?
No, I, I mean, I was in agreement, so.
Okay, okay, thanks. Alright, so we will ask Kevin to abstain from this vote. And I'll just ask if there are any other questions. If not, we'll take a motion to approve. April or Mary, would either one of you want to make a motion to approve?
Oh, so moved, sorry.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Mary?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mike?
I'll say it.
Okay. Um, myself, yes. And Kevin abstained, so it's four zero one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and before we move on, I just want to thank the teachers and, and the assistant principals. And, and before we move on, I just wanna thank the teachers and, and the assistant principals for their work because this has been certainly one of the most unique and trying school years that we've ever experienced. And the spirit that they have come in and worked and supported our students is just nothing less than miraculous, so kudos to them. And I'm just so grateful that they're with us. Okay, moving on, so, you know, the big time, we are now returning to school. April fifth, it will be the elementary. Um, right now, our kindergarten, we have one hundred and fourteen in-person, thirty-one remote. In first grade, one hundred and eighteen in-person, this will be for five days a week, and fifty-two remote. And second grade is one hundred and four and twenty-seven remote. So things are in, you know, we are now moving furniture back in, making sure that we've social distanced, um, and maintain that. We're working out with the lunchroom. So when we hit April fifth, we'll be ready to go and we're quite excited. And Minnet Elementary, right now we have one hundred and fifteen in-person, forty-four will be remote. And grade four, eighty-six in-person and forty-one remote. Now, what I would also just share would be, because we've, when they opened it up to students that were remote, could return, that really created a situation where we had some teachers that were overloaded with students and some teachers that were remote ended up with just a few students. So they're having to come back. So there will be some shifting of students with teachers, but there is absolutely nothing that we can do about that, um, just because of the nec- the necessity of keeping the three-feet rule and keeping everything in balance. So I know the principals will be talking with the parents about this and certainly making that adjustment. As a reminder, during this time, we, social distancing stays in place. It's six feet in the hallways, three feet in the classrooms, and in the lunchroom, it is six feet. Because of that, we're going to have to do a number of different lunches. And we're also having lunches in other areas than just the lunchroom, so we can maintain that six feet. Masks, again, are worn at all times unless there's a medical reason, um, except at lunch and during mass breaks. We are continuing the policy of no visitors and we cannot stress enough, if a student or staff does not feel well, please, please stay home. So we are anticipating on April fifth, we'll be ready to go. And on April twenty-sixth, our high school and middle school will be back in session. I did apply for a waiver to delay the elementary. Several weeks, it was denied. I was granted the waiver that will allow fifth grade to return with the middle school. So one was approved by DUCY and one was not. And so with that being said, that was another reason why our elementary, it will be returning on April fifth. Um, that tells you that. Okay, so the next, uh, piece that I would like to talk with you about would be the personal day buyback that we could offer for all staff, all, um, WEA staff for this year. And the reason why is we're really stressing the fact that we want to limit person, uh, or people in, personnel in. And by having to bring subs in and out of the building, that only increases our chances of, of spreading COVID. One of the issues that we're facing now would be finding subs. We've hired, you know, we're looking to hire permanent intermittent subs, which means five days a week because we really don't wanna do the day-to-day subs and bring people in and out. The other thing that our staff, every year they have three personal days and you have the option of rolling one into the following year. So some of our staff have four personal days. So, many of our staff have only used maybe one, some haven't used any. So we're now coming down to the end of the year when people, uh, may be using their personal days or they're going to lose them. This, um, because of this and because of the COVID situation, what we would like to do is to offer a buyback for one year for our staff. The reason why simply the, the staff will either lose them if they don't use them and we would rather them not use them because we do not wanna have to bring in substitute teachers or have staff double up, lose their prep time, et cetera. And so we have a proposal and we've worked with the, um, WEA on this. And so what we would do is, we would offer a one-time buyout and this would be for this year only. And so if you have a personal day, you could buy it, we would buy it back, the district, for a hundred and seventy-five dollars and that would be for A and B. Unit C would be ninety dollars and Unit D would be ninety dollars. And really, the way, the way this was arrived, there were two different options. One, we took their daily rate and according to the MTA, you would use a point zero five to get their daily rate. When I did that, we were at two hundred and, I think, thirty-nine thousand dollars, which was certainly too much to spend. And so I took it to point, um, zero one zero, which would half it and that took us to a hundred and thirty-some thousand. And so I looked at it from a different angle because some of the, the people would get a larger amount and some would not. So if we took one figure and just put it across the board, I arrived at this number and this is really lower than, um, a daily rate at point one zero, but it evens it out across, for everyone. So I added one more option. And every year, we always hear about how much money our staff spends on back-to-school items for their classroom, for students, et cetera, et cetera. You know, one thing that we've never been able to do is to say to staff, you know what? We know that you're, you're spending all of this money, your money, and what we would like to do is to be able to help you out. And today, you know, and this year for the first time, I think that, that's a possibility. And so if a staff member has, just as an example, two days, they could say, you know, I want to sell back one of my days and get a hundred and seventy-five dollars, but I want to sell back to the district one more day, but I want you to hold it for a voucher. And then next year or even this year, if they would like, when they need classroom items, instead of having to spend their own money, they have cashed in one of their days and we would, um, purchase a hundred and seventy-five dollars worth of supplies for that classroom. If they would like to, if they had four days, they certainly can do all four days into the same concept. So this way, it's, it seemed like a win-win for our students and a win-win from the, for the teachers. This has not been listed for a vote, so this would be brought up on April eighth. But if you have any questions, please let me know. The WEA has reviewed this and this is the option that they, these are the two options that they would like to combine together for your consideration. So do you have, have any questions about that?
Mike, do you have a question?
Oh. Uh, I, I did, but, but she, Dr. Shaverhood, uh, had answered it. I just wanna know if it needed. I mean, even though we're gonna, like, give them money and buy out their days, if, if we needed like a union approval as well and, and we do.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And really, they were given that, the two options, they could either have it where we would look at their daily rate and then take it down by, um, half and then half it again, but they chose this option two where it was just a flat across the board. We would be the ones that would be doing the, you know, we certainly will keeping, be keeping files as far as who has bought back days, quote, bought them back and then can exchange them for student supplies, et cetera.
And just an example, like in the so-called real world, it's, it's interesting. I, I kinda look, look forward to doing this in my own, in my own job and due to COVID, they're not doing it anymore because everybody's staying home and doing, working remote and, uh, they'd be, they'd be more apt to use it and it costs a lot of money, you know, so.
Yeah, so, you know, again, this would just be for this year and it will be placed on the agenda for the next school committee meeting.
And it will be, will it be in the form of an MOA?
Yes, it will be.
Okay.
Yeah.
And again, it's just for this school year, just the remainder of this school year?
Yeah, it is just for the remainder of the school year. And I think really what we have to do is, we have to see how it, it plays out. Um, because every year, we have some teachers that just simply do not use their days and they lose them. And we have other people that, you know, get down into May and, and June and we have a number of people out just because if they don't use them, they lose them. So this might be a, a, something that we would like to explore for the future, but we won't know until we move forward. Okay? I think.
Well, thank you for bringing that up tonight as an intro to what you'll, you know, into for next week.
Yeah, and I think that completes everything that I have.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions at all about the reopening or anything before we move on? The superintendent? Our next meeting will, oh, April, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, um, so I do have questions just with reopening, um, with, uh, transportation. So I know that, you know, I've seen some concern that some families, um, are worried about the, the no variance, um, that we put in place during the hybrid, which is, you know, understandable to keep those particular cohorts kind of as small as possible. My question is, when we're bringing back the majority of the students, um, you know, and we know that a lot of them are doing sports and doing these other things, why we wouldn't be able to or if we'd be able to look into, um, you know, those families that have had to go to work or that are first responders or first frontline workers that rely on, um, after-school care, either at the YMCA or at the Boys and Girls Club if they're reopening, uh, since it would be continuous cohorts of the children that are already in the schools, what the plan is going forward for, uh, those families that would need after-school care for, um, transportation? And if there is, in a, I don't know, any exceptions or a limit or anything like that, I just don't know what, uh, I, we didn't talk about anything transportation-related with the reopening, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, right now we are doing no variances this year. Um, when we look at the buses and the routes, we just don't have the ability to do that. We've offered and we will continue to offer if, if people need to have their child at the Y, we will pick them up at the Y, but we need to make the Y both pick up and drop off. We simply do not have the capacity to make this work if we start shifting, um, students around to meet the variances. We just don't have, we just can't do it.
So if my child, if I want my child to go to the Y after school, I can have them picked up at the Y before school and then they can go to the Y after school?
Correct.
Okay, even if that's not in place now? Or even if they haven't been doing that all year, they could make that change now, is that?
If that's something that needs to happen, then I would urge a parent to contact transportation or contact, um, myself about that. And we will have a, a conversation about how that's, how we can make that happen.
Thank you.
I would also just point out that we've placed a large ad in the Standard Times this past Sunday looking for bus drivers, paraprofessionals, custodians, um, monitors. And if anybody is interested, please, 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 contact us.
Mike, you wanna drive a bus?
No, I actually do wanna drive a bus, but I, but hours don't work for me. I'd love to do that. So, but no, but you reminded me of something in the vacancy list and, uh, and I did, I saw those four, I think, four bus drivers. But, uh, but something else, uh, the biology teacher at the high school, and I noticed Mr. Palladino is on now. Is that, that's for next year, right?
Yes, that's true.
And now, and now, so we're able to do that, like we, he had originally asked for that, but we, you know, then we, we said we couldn't, but now we, we can, right?
Mm-hmm.
Now, I know, I know Ms. Siemens was asking for a teacher in the fourth grade. Can we do that as well?
Well, what we're doing is, um, we've had this conversation today, actually, in our admin meeting. So what we're doing is, we're looking at their, um, enrollment. And if the enrollment at the ti- at this time warrants it, then absolutely we're going to post. Currently, if every student that has homeschooled and with some new people, you know, we would be looking at about twenty-four per fourth grade. And if that would hold and we would start seeing the students returning from homeschool, all the students that have homeschooled return and there would be twenty-four in every fourth grade class, then yes, we would post. But right now, we're not at that number. And so at this point, we, we're not even into April. And so as we start moving into the spring and early summer, we're going to be watching enrollment very closely and if we need to post, then we certainly will.
Okay, and, and so what's the cutoff? Like, when, what, what number are you looking at to, to decide, you know, when you actually need to hire someone there?
Well, that's a, that's a really hard question to answer, but I think if we look at everyone else and they're lower than twenty-four, then we certainly would post. If we have other needs and other grade levels that are twenty-six, twenty-seven or twenty-eight, that would take a priority. So it's all, you know, we're just trying to keep everything in perspective. You know, we're also looking at, um, making sure that we can hire teachers and support for students who need remediation. We're now looking at how do we address students when they come back? Um, and do we need to move things into the summer? So this is a, a moving target that we're keeping a very close eye on and, and we will have frequent conversations about that.
Right, you see, even as you mentioned in the, uh, beginning of this meeting, you know, you, great, you know, you've got the, the homeschoolers who we anticipated coming back, but it's the new school and we might just get more in, more choi- choice students in that school.
Yeah. Yes, and I will tell you that I was in the school on, uh, yesterday and it is absolutely beautiful. I mean, it's gorgeous.
Yeah, you can just tell. So, I mean, I, whenever I go to it, like he used to wear him, I, I, I make a point to go down Minnet. And I'm with my wife and she doesn't, she normally doesn't go that way. She said, "Why do you always go this way?" I said, "'Cause I wanna see the school. I really wanna see that school," you know?
Yeah, they, they have the, um, cafeteria windows in now. And when you go, when we saw it, it was like, you would think it's almost the front of the building. It's that, it's just that breathtaking. So I am very excited for people to start seeing our new building and it's just, it's gonna change perspective in Wareham. We also have spent some time, Joan and Bethany have worked very hard. We've made room. We've made room assignments. We're going to walk the building again next Wednesday and check out all the room assignments, and then we're going to share with people where they will be located. Um, we finished with the key meeting, so that's done, and, you know, it's, it's like, right now, we're into the, just the final pieces. It's, it's really fun.
Yeah. It's got the new school smell at bed, huh?
It does. Better than a new car.
Well, you just did our elementary school update for us.
I'm hurrying you along.
Um, so, okay, so we will move along. To the next item on the agenda is the school committee meeting calendar. So we had that in our packet. We did talk about it a little at the last meeting. Um, Mike, I know you weren't at the last meeting. What we did talk about last time was making some changes because of the mask convention, if it is able to take place this year in person. Um, so we changed the meeting date to, from a different date. Um, and then the other change that was made on this version is that on Tuesday, the day of the all-day budget workshop, there's, we inserted a meeting on that day just for the annual strategic school and improvement plan presentation, which is usually part of a regular meeting. Um, but it really, you know, it really is important enough, you know, to have its own meeting. There's a lot of material that's involved, as you all know, um, for that meeting, so we could concentrate just on that for that meeting. It would be on a Tuesday. Um, like I said, the bit, the budget meeting would be in the morning, and that meeting would be in the evening. So how do you all feel about that?
Is there any way to run them concurrently so that we're not, like, leaving and coming back, just kind of getting everything all hammered out at once? Or is there, would you guys prefer to leave the budget workshop and then come back? I would prefer to just do it concurrently, back-to-back, but if I'm the only one, then.
Well, I think, Andrea, you can address that. I think it would be a problem with the people who you would want at that meeting during the day.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thrilled, first of all. Like, I can't tell you, that makes me, um, that I'm not jamming myself in, or we're not jamming in to.
And we're not hurrying you, or, yeah.
Yeah, I always feel like, oh, you know, and everybody gets very stressed out. So I'm just very excited about that possibility that that's part of the agenda. So thank, thank you for that. Um, and it, I think it needs to be like a regular school committee meeting because the budget, um, the budget all-day budget meeting, um, isn't taped live often. It has been in the past, but then sometimes it's just taped, so it isn't live, uh, like this meeting is.
Right, right.
It's sort of a different setup, and then the people that have to attend that are all the leaders of our, our buildings because they speak to the different elements of the plan, and they really aren't available during the day, uh, because they're working.
Right.
Um, I think it would be difficult to, I understand April's point. It would be, um, really convenient, but I think it really needs to be held like a regular school committee meeting.
Right, yeah, I, I agree, April. It would be nice if we could do it all at once, but I just don't. To get all those people to be able to come during the day, I think, might be difficult.
Okay, I was, like I said, I was just curious, so that, that's fine.
So that, I believe that was the only change made from last week. Or, uh, from our last meeting. Go ahead, Mike.
So, so I won't be here, but if you, in, in hindsight, um, when we did the one that for this year, I, 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 I wish we looked to get Wednesdays back. I don't know if you know how you guys feel about that. You know, but I, I like meeting on Wednesdays better than Thursdays.
I have work meetings on Wednesdays, so that, for me, for me personally. If I'm, if I'm re-elected, uh, that wouldn't work for me, but hopefully I will be. We can continue the way things are.
Well, is it there also a conflict with the Cape Cod collaborative meetings?
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
Are they on Wednesday?
They are on Wednesdays.
The reason that we changed to Thursday was to be able to have that meeting room. Um, that's why we changed to Thursday.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
Which I think is important, too.
Yeah. And Mike, I have no doubt that we will see lots of you, even when you're not on the school committee.
Well, you, you'll see me on the school building committee.
Yes. And I'm sure we'll see you at school committee meetings, too. All right, so if anyone, if no one has any other questions, if anyone would like to make a motion to approve this schedule.
Oh. So moved.
Second.
Um, roll call vote, April?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Myself, yes, so five zero zero. So there you go, Andrea.
Thank you.
All right, um, the only other item that's not on the agenda but falls under report of the school committee, I would just, we talked about it a little bit last time about coming back to in-person meetings. Um, Mike will, will agree with me that we have, I've made an effort to reach out to those at the town level to ask them about being able to do that, and I've not made any progress yet, but we will continue, um, to do that. And hopefully by the, by our next meeting, uh, we'll have, we'll have more news about when that, when that can happen. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, just, you know, speaking for Joyce and myself, I mean, yeah, we're pretty, I mean, to, to those that are like, you know, school committee, me, school committee people, you know, you're still meeting remotely, you know, why do, why do we have to go back to school? I mean, between, I know between Joyce and I, we'd love to have in-person meetings, you know, and, um, but, but we can't, we're not allowed. You know, and, and I know Joyce, Joyce had sent them an email fifteen days ago, and you haven't heard anything, right, Joyce?
No, no.
You followed up, you followed up, and then I just followed up today, and hopefully we'll hear something.
Mm-hmm. I know they're busy, so I will just be persistent, and, and like I said, hopefully by the time we meet again in two weeks, we'll, we'll have some answers about where and when that can happen. Um, and I'm sorry, going back to the, the schedule that we just voted, so, um, Jamie put this schedule in our packet with some of the, um, some of the dates on it. This schedule, she made this just for us, so we won't see that schedule anywhere else, but that's for, for our own use. So thank you, Jamie. I know you can hear me. Thank you. Mike, did you want to say something else?
No.
Oh. Okay, does anyone else have any other business? Not anticipated? All right, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
April?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night, everyone.